Seibertson.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Isom.
Eric.
Gage.
Eric.
Kooz.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Zingy.
Please, join me in my pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. That brings us down to persons to be heard. Evelyn?
Evelyn Urbly, 870 Summit Terrace, on behalf of First City Homeless Services Overnight Warming Shelter. I want to say Happy New Year and thank you for having us open up the Overnight Warming Center. I will be giving a bigger report later when we are presenting for the grants, but to say thank you for the first installment of $40,000 for the Overnight Warming Center. We have been paying our employees and we thank you for that. So, I didn't send you all kinds of statistics, but I want to let you know we've been open for three months and we have seen 67 people sleep at the Overnight Warming Center. And any night of the week, you can go by the door and you can find that there are people waiting at the door to get in at 8 o'clock at night. We often wonder what value do we put on our money and how does it affect the commodity? Last week, on Wednesday, when it was 14 degrees, the Ketchikan Police Department delivered two people who were near frozen to death. So, if there's any good reason for the Overnight Warming Center, it would have been for those two individuals. On Wednesday night. And on Thursday night, they delivered two more individuals who otherwise would have been frozen to death. So, when we ask, "What is the purpose of the Overnight Warming Center?", those four individuals are testimony to the fact that it is cold outside. They are regular sleepers at the shelter. We have an average of 12 people a night and those 12 people come every night. And when you look at that statistic, you say, you know, that there are 12 people who otherwise would be on the street. So, we want to say thank you for opening the shelter because it was your finances that allowed us to do that. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, Evelyn? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I have one. Oh, we got a question.
Oop, we got a question.
So, these individuals that were delivered and the people that stayed there, how are they prepared for weather? Do they have warm coat, shoes, boots?
Yes.
Kind of stuff?
What we are observing, Councilmember Seibertson, is we have a greater concern that First City Homeless Services has to address. These four people that I'm talking about, two of them specifically that I'm talking about, are in the shelter all day long. They are the homeless in the shelter all day long. We close at 4 o'clock for four hours and we open at 8 o'clock. These two individuals, who had no place to go to be on the street, were drinking to stay warm. Alcoholics drink to stay warm. To suffer through the misery of being on the street, you drank. They drank too much. They laid down over by the Discovery Center and the KPD, who does around, knowing where people are, picked them up and brought them to the shelter. So, their drinking took place during those four hours when our doors were closed. We don't have the finances to be open that four-hour period of time. So, we have a new realization that people need a home and they need someplace to go. And we are not in a position to offer them housing 24 hours a day. We are talking with Chief Joe because some of our people, the next issue that we have is that because we do not have sprinklers, we're not allowed at this point in time to offer any accoutrements for sleeping. It's warmer in the lobby of the police station than it is in the shelter. We have the temperature at 72 degrees and people are laying on the carpet with their coats on. But because we can't offer them a blanket, because we can't offer them that comfort, they're finding the lobby of the police station much warmer, and it is. And they can, "I'll sleep in a chair if I can be warm" versus laying on the floor. So, already I'm in dialogue with Chief Joe about how do we address being able to offer some comfort to people who are sleeping a blanket? I know in Anchorage, they have a winter variance. I don't know the details of it. I just know that it exists. When it gets to a certain temperature, then other churches and other places can open for the night to allow people to sleep there. Whether they have sprinklers or not, they give them blankets and pillows. We might have to approach the city, once we get more details about what this would look like, to say, "Could we have a variance so that we can offer people a piece of foam on the floor and a blanket?" We are just learning the process of housing people at night. We have not had trouble. We have very inebriated people. We fill their belly. And here's a shout out to everybody who's listening. Gold Pan Pizza. Nearly every single night, they bring all of their extra pizzas. So, we might get five to seven pizzas a night from Gold Pan, who are pretty well covering our food budget. Cold Pan also supplies pizzas for the Foxhole and the Foxhole brings pizza up to the shelter. So, our community is responding. Ketchikan Indian Community gives us soup and we supply soup. I think you heard that KIC voted to support the Overnight Warming Center for the next three years, $5,000 a year for the next three years. That's specific to the Overnight Warming Center. Peace Health has offered to pay the rent and utilities for the next three years at $9,000 a year. So, what we're seeking now is, we have covenanted with you to do, we're seeking the salary of the employees. We have the rent covered. We have all of the food covered. We have $5,000 from KIC to apply to one of the salaries. And I think we're doing a pretty darn good job for only being existence, open for three months and organized for four. So, we look forward to talking more to you about the Overnight Warming Center and hopefully you also recognize the good that it's doing for members of our community. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. Thank you. Thanks, Evelyn.
You're welcome.
Terry.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. My name is Terry Robbins. I live at 601 East First Street. I'm here tonight as a volunteer for Alaskans for Integrity. And I just want to say, that's a hard act to follow because that's pretty cool that our community is taking care of its homeless the way that we are. I'm very, very pleased to hear that. This, Alaskans for Integrity has sponsored a voter initiative to get on the ballot next November. It's called the Government Accountability Petition. And it is, it seeks to hold our elected officials, legislators, accountable for doing the job that they were elected to do. The, if passed, this proposed ballot initiative would increase transparency and accountability in state government in five key ways. First of all, it bans legislators from collecting per diem if they are unable to pass a budget within the first 121 days of the regular session. So, if they go into extra sessions like they did this year, they would be unable to collect per diem until that budget was passed. Secondly, it expands the conflict of interest language, sorry, the conflict of interest requirements. It denies state funding for oversea trips taken by legislators unless they first prove in writing that it will be of substantial benefit to the state and receive approval. It prohibits lobbyists from buying alcohol or extravagant meals for either legislators or their staff for any sort of incentives. And it restricts the money that foreign influence corporations can donate to state or local campaigns or candidates. So, those are the five main points for this petition. We have volunteers down at the Plaza Mall at a table there set up. In the afternoons, there will be someone there Friday, Saturday, and Monday. I'm not sure about Sunday. And they are volunteers, so I can't really ask them to do too much. There is also a Facebook page, Alaskans for Integrity, on Facebook. And I would encourage any of you to sign the petition or if you know of people who might be interested, pass the word. I hope that I see a lot of people down at the Plaza Mall signing this petition. I'll also be here for a while. If you don't take too long to go on your break, I'll stick around and be out in the hallway if you want to come sign the petition. So, thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Terry? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Nancy, your answer. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor Nancy McNulty, Talbets, 1101 Tongas Avenue. I'd like my comments entered into the official record, public record for item 15A1. I'm here tonight to object to the item under executive session, "Negotiation of an Amendment to the Birth Four Lease Agreement to undertake facility modifications to accommodate post-Panama vessels for the 2019 cruise ship season, Ketchikan Company." I just handed you Talbets Corps of Engineers' Public Comment dated December 22, 2017, opposing Ketchikan Company's application to modify Birth Four Exhibit One. All the exhibits in Talbets' Public Comment are available at the City Clerk's Office. I've given you a few. I've also handed you a copy of an article that was printed from the KBD website dated December 13, 2017, "Two Really, Really Big Cruise Ships Headed to Alaska," Exhibit Two. In this article, there is a statement, "The Ovation is Leading Its China and Australia Routes Due to a Drop in Demand." The Ovation of the Seas is coming to Alaska in 2019. If Royal Caribbean finds the demand is not strong enough to fill the Ovation of the Seas on a weekly basis for the Alaska market, it will reposition the ship to a market where it can be filled to capacity. For $39.5 million, the City of Ketchikan can expand City-Owned Birth One and Two to accommodate two post-Panama cruise ships. And in doing so, they will not add a nearly $3 million per year additional lease payment for Birth Four. It does not make economic sense for the City of Ketchikan to burden themselves with an additional lease payment for the expansion of Birth Four. The City of Ketchikan can expand City-owned Birth One and Two to accommodate two post-Panama ships for only $2.57 million more than if it would cost to build one small-ship berth and one post-Panama-sized berth at City-owned Birth One and Two. For less than one year's lease amount, the City can expand City-owned Birth One and Two and have two post-Panama ships berthed instead of one small-ship berth and one post-Panama ship. Steve Corporal, Ports and Harvest Director, has stated recently that it's not feasible for the City to have City-owned Birth One and Two ready for the 2019 cruise ship season. They would be ready for 2020 season. If the City cannot place the Ovation of the Seas at its current docking facilities for the 2019 season, the Ovation of the Seas will have to anchor out for one season. If there is concern about the Ovation of the Seas relocating to another port because of lack of docking facilities in Ketchikan for the 2019 cruise ship season, I believe this to be unfounded and untrue because of the large and vibrant shore excursion program in Ketchikan, which is very lucrative to each and every cruise ship coming to Ketchikan. I believe it is premature to consider an amendment to the Birth Four Lease at this time. There are two public meetings planned for January 31, 2018, and February 14, 2018, and a final report by Moffett and Nichol to be completed by April of 2018 regarding the uplands and the layout for City-owned Birth One and Two. The additional information gathered at these public meetings by Moffett and Nichol, along with the comments that Talbets submitted to the Corps of Engineers on December 22, 2017, opposing the expansion of Birth Four, should be thoroughly considered before the City agrees to any amendment to the Birth Four Lease. As you know, for many reasons I've stated today and reasons I've stated to you in the past, I am very much opposed to the expansion of Birth Four until any lease amendment, agreement, amendment, I'm sorry. I'm definitely opposed to any expansion of Birth Four and opposed to any lease amendment. Thank you.
Any questions for Nancy? Thank you, Nancy. Reed.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Reed Harding. My address is 121 Nadu. I'm here as the Drug-Free Communities Coordinator for the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. I helped administer a grant from the Office of National Drug Control Policy. And part of my duties is to relay drug policy information to organizations and governmental bodies. And that's why I'm here tonight. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but Jeff Sessions, who is the Attorney General for the United States, released a memorandum this morning and it's about marijuana enforcement. And I can read it to you or I can just summarize it for you. Exactly. That's what I was thinking. Basically, he's changed the Obama-era policy of turning other back on prosecuting state marijuana businesses. He's removed that and now he's saying that it's okay for federal prosecutors to go ahead and prosecute state-based organizations. In regards to that, there's been several responses here in Alaska. The Chairman of Alaska's Marijuana Control Board, Peter Minaric, who's also the Police Chief of Saldatnu, resigned from the Marijuana Control Board effective Thursday. He says the decision, he says the decision does away with the federal government's looking the other way in states that legalize marijuana and he's not going to be there for the fallout. Alaska Governor Bill Walker says he is committed to upholding the will of Alaska voters who legalized recreational pot in 2014. Also, the U.S. Attorney Office of the District of Alaska has released their own policy statement. And he has said, in summary, that he will leave the, still leave the decisions regarding prosecution up to federal prosecutors. So, that's a green light for federal prosecutors to prosecute businesses, organizations, or other entities here in the state of Alaska through the federal system. And I just wanted to make you guys aware that that's happened. I was really surprised when that happened this morning. And so, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. But it's relatively new information for me.
Any questions for Reed?
Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you very much, Reed. Eric?
Hi, Eric Reamer, 420 Front Streets. I'm here representing, well, maybe the cannabis community of Ketchikan. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the ordinance that you guys have on the table tonight, which is a blanket ban of any new cannabis businesses in town here. Overall, I think the, this ordinance is pretty poorly reasoned and prohibitive of new business ventures in town. Banning these new cannabis businesses is going to negatively impact the local economy. I mean, we don't have anybody up there right now that has applied for new businesses, but now they can't even do it. This is a growing economy. The cannabis economy in Ketchikan is just starting. I mean, last year was the first year. We did great. Rainforest had a great year. And we brought a lot of money to the city. And now, the opportunity for like expansion is there. People see that it's okay to do it. And we're, this ordinance is going to basically prohibit that, those new businesses from coming in. A manufacturing business, a concentrate-making business. We're going to lose out on a big part of this economy if we prohibit that. Right now, I go out of town to source my products because I can't source them here. I would love to spend that money locally and to put that money back into the pockets of businesses here in Ketchikan. But, you know, if you guys go ahead with this ordinance, it can't happen. It's, it's just not fair to anybody that wants to get into this business. And, you know, I've heard a lot of the objections about coming from this council and from other people about the cannabis businesses in town. And I just wanted to say that these businesses aren't going to have a public face when it comes to street traffic, per se. Like, the, the only people, the only businesses that could sell cannabis products to the public are retail stores. We have two retail stores in town right now. You guys have already limited the product to two retail, or limited the number to two retail stores, so there won't be any more shops popping up. It's not going to, you're not going to see like the downtown corridor full of new cannabis businesses. So, you know, as far as the public face of cannabis, that's not even an issue. Boom, boom, boom. I'm sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought going there. There's not, there's not going to be any new signs. There's not going to be any kind of new, like, in-your-face activity. Any, any new businesses that do come into town are going to be zoned. They're going to be operating in commercial and industrially zoned areas. It's away from the public traffic. It's away from public view. And like I said, they aren't going to be operating storefronts. So, there's not going to be like a series of other places where people could go to get their products. What these businesses could bring to town for us is an opportunity, like I said, to spend our money locally and to encourage the local economy to grow, to add new businesses to this town. I was driving through Ketchikan earlier tonight and I noticed, you know, half a dozen empty storefronts in town. There's just not, the economy that we have here is tourist-based. I mean, we can all agree on that. And by, these are auxiliary businesses that could support other businesses, like myself, that directly interact with the cruise ship industry. So, I'm just saying that that would, stopping them before they even get started, I think is, is not the best way to go about this. It's short-sighted. There's not going to be any kind of, like I said, public interface. There's not going to be any smells. There's not going to be any like signage or anything like that. Smell, I mean, the new kinds of businesses that would go in would be like bakeries, right? So, I guess there could be like fresh-baked cookie smell in the area. People could complain about that. I don't know if they would or not. But that, that's what I have to say about this. It's not forward-thinking. It's kind of reactive. And I, I think that there's a couple alternatives to a blanket ban on new cannabis businesses in town. One alternative would be to limit the number of new businesses that could come into town. You already limited it to two retail stores. There's only two cultivator facilities now. Why not limit it to two product manufacturing facilities? And I just want to say, I don't have a horse in this race. I don't, I'm not trying to open a new business here. But I do want other people to be able to open these new businesses. My partner, Mark, was here last week and he was, he referenced a friend of ours who was trying to get into this business and start a new thing. She's a young woman, 25 years old, ready to start an entrepreneurial career. And that's going to be, you're putting the kibosh on that by saying no before we could even get started. So, there's that. Coal memo. Reed was talking about that and I guess he, I don't know if anybody else has heard about the Sessions statement rescinding the coal memo. I would like to go on record and saying, "We're not, we're not worried about it." I mean, "We're not going to stop our business. We are making no plans to, that, to stop, or slow down what we're doing there." I think that all three U.S. Representatives for Alaska have issued statements condemning Sessions's removal, reversal of the coal memo. And so, we're confident that our state legislators are going to go to bat for us and protect us from any kind of frivolous lawsuits from the U.S. government. And, oh, alternatives to the blanket ban, another option for you guys to consider would be maybe a sunset clause. Ban them for a year and let's revisit the issue with new information, with, with like a more complete view of what's happening in the marketplace rather than just like saying no to it and backing off right away. I think that would, it would be a lot easier to revisit an ordinance than to fight an uphill battle to get it reversed. I mean, it's, it's done all the time, sunset clauses. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has for me here.
Terry.
So, we already have two cultivators in city limits?
Well, there's the one, Rainforest Cannabis Cultivation, which is out at Rex Allen Drive, which is zoned, commercial, and light industrial. That's Rainforest Cannabis Shop. And then I believe Jesse Hoyt and Jake Rodriguez are opening another cultivation facility on North Tongas Avenue in that area. And, yeah, so there are two cultivators within the city limits.
Okay, now I have another question.
Okay, cool.
So, you're saying that Sessions' decision isn't going to affect how you do business at all?
So, what it might-
Won't you be breaking the law?
So, we won't be, we'll, we are currently operating outside of federal law anyway. I mean, so, but the state of Alaska has passed its own laws saying you are able to operate. There's a voter referendum, Washington, Colorado, Oregon, California, Maine. I mean, there's District of Columbia. There's a lot of states that are operating outside of that federal law. As of right now, 29 other states are, currently have provisions for medical marijuana in place. And so, they are technically operating outside of federal law, too. As what the coal memo, this rescindence of the coal memo, what that might affect us is in like our transporting cannabis to the island. And so, you know, you guys making this decision to ban edible makers on the island here or within the city limits would adversely affect my business because I, I would like to shop locally for that. And if I can't, I have to go somewhere else to get those edibles. And if that, and if, it could be harder for me to do that with the rescindence of this coal memo. Our, the head of AMCO, Cynthia Franklin, a few months ago, last summer, said that they were, they were okay with transporting cannabis publicly within the state, commercial airlines, whatever, as long as the airlines didn't object to that. And so, it's kind of, as long as we're not transporting across state lines, they don't have a problem with it. So, but, you know, this new direction that the federal government is taking could make it a little bit harder for us to source products.
Dave?
Well, that was a question I was going to ask. Doesn't it make it harder? I mean, I, I understand there's, there's an effort to create a local testing facility, but that's not here yet. And so, obviously you have to send it out to test it with the port here. And so, isn't, isn't the rescinding of the coal memo going to make that problematic?
No, that's a good point. It very well could. The product amounts that people send to labs currently, as far as flour goes, it's very small amounts, like less than four grams per sample. As far as the baking and the concentrates, the manufactured goods from cannabis products, I honestly, I don't know. I haven't looked into how much they need to submit to test, to these labs to get tested, how much of that product. But I can tell you from personal experience, having transported cannabis products legally in the state of Alaska, that it's, it hasn't been a problem yet. And I don't anticipate that testing will be a problem in the future.
Jenny?
What about the issues they've had up north with edibles? And the one place that was shut down because the THC was above the level that was required?
Yeah, that's it.
You know, I mean, yeah.
That's, that, thanks for bringing that up. I couldn't decide whether to talk about the frozen buds issue or not. From my understanding, first of all, these are still, it's still an ongoing investigation. They've been fined and talked about and they're under investigation currently. But all the allegations that have been brought forth against that company are still being investigated. So, we don't know what's going to happen there. As far as the, how products are tested and then brought to market, everything, every flower has, that's harvested, has to be tested in a batch, in a lab. And everything that goes from the cultivator, the grower, to that product manufacturer, that's, has already been tested by the grower. Now, the manufacturer takes that flour that has test results with it and they convert it into a product, a cannabis product. For instance, cookies or brownies or something similar like that, an edible or a concentrate. That facility then takes their products that they've created and submits it to a testing lab, too, before they can sell it to a retail shop. Now, Frozen Buds has a great point. If they have to get every product that they make tested before it gets entered into the metric system, which is the system that tracks all, all the cannabis products in Alaska, how were they able to sell it to us? It seems like in some kind of administrative oversight. I personally, I've interacted with those folks a couple, a handful of times. They're nice people. I don't believe that they were doing everything that these articles and these allegations said they were doing. In personal conversations with them, they've said to me that it was- that it was one disgruntled employee that they had to let go that has come forth again and again with these allegations to AMCO. So, to me, it seems like kind of an internal affair up there. However, it has been, uh, it's blossomed into this whole thing. But, yeah, that happened and it shouldn't have happened. That's pub- that is endangering public safety. But, by precluding other possible businesses to step up and fill that hole and operate within the bounds of the law and within the grounds of public safety, um, well, this blanket ban would prohibit that. And I don't think it's fair to let one "bad apple," quote-unquote, like spoil the whole bunch, if you will. Um, I don't think that, e- everybody that I've had interactions with in this industry has been upstanding people. They've been very intelligent, they've been really dedicated to making the best product that they could possibly make and bring it to market. So...
Judy?
Um, I guess my one last question is, how many times has AMCO, is that what they're called? How many times have they been to Ketchikan and checked you guys out?
They've been to, into our shop two times. Um, I can't speak to how many times they've been to other shops, uh, in Ketchikan or other cultivation facilities and whatnot, but they've come in and seen us twice.
And when did you guys open?
Uh, April.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Mark?
So when you, pardon me, so when you guys opened your store, it was with the understanding that at least initially you'd be purchasing all of your product out of town? That was your business plan?
To be honest with you, I wanted to purchase products locally and I wanted to purchase it in town. I would much rather spend my money locally than go out of town for it. But, it just turns out with the ups and downs of these businesses and the cultivators that we have here that we, we are going out of town to source our products.
Do you have the opportunity, I'm, I'm assuming the Rainforest Growing Facility isn't gonna sell to you guys, but Mr. Hoyt's, is that a possibility that he would sell to you?
It is a possibility, yeah. And in fact, I'm a, I'm a commercial fisherman and gooey duck diver. Jesse's a gooey duck diver, Jake's a gooey duck diver. We know each other professionally, socially, and we've, uh, talked about this in, uh, at length already.
So, you have a future supply stream, it looks like?
Possibly, potentially, hopefully. Well, w- honestly, I'm not gonna say I'm gonna buy anything from them until I see the product, I see their facility and I see what they're doing. It is possible, absolutely.
Oh, and then just one point of information, it's not smell-free, I work next door to the, on Rex Allen Drive. Ninety percent of the time, it is. But it, it's, you know it's there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And you're, are you talking about their cultivation facility? Where they're growing plants?
I work next door up on Rex Allen Drive and, and I don't know if it's the wind or, I don't know, I don't know what the, the the conditions are, but there are times when you know exactly what's next door.
So, the businesses that you guys are talking about pro- banning right now are not cultivation facilities. You've already done that, um, there's only two allowed within the city limits. The businesses that are not going to be allowed to have their fair shake of it are product manufacturers. Like, they're taking, um, a big bag of leaf and putting it into a batch of butter and making cookies or brownies or something with that. And, I'm pretty sure that's not, I'm a hundred percent positive, that's not gonna put out the same kind of smell as a garden of fresh flowers. I mean, I've, I've been outside grows before too and you can't smell it on the outside. But, as far as the bakeries that I've been to goes, there's no indication of what's going on inside there.
Okay. Jenny Lee?
Um, so, then the other question would be is how are we gonna make sure that these don't, um, are not advertised geared towards children, teens and young adults who are not twenty-one? And what's your business's, um, part in explaining that the underage brain should not be on cannabis?
So, I'm glad you actually asked that question. Once again, these businesses are not going to be advertising directly to the public. The only spot to legally buy cannabis is from a retail store, a licensed retail facility. And that's our job to communicate what we have and what is, is or is not appropriate for underage consumption. We're not targeting kids. Like, I don't want to sell anything to anybody who's not of legal age. You're absolutely right, kids shouldn't be, uh, consuming cannabis, they shouldn't be consuming alcohol, they shouldn't even be consuming Adderall, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, these are growing brains here. And any kind of chemicals that we're adding to their bodies is, we don't know what's gonna happen to them. They will adversely affect their brains, absolutely. But, I, I'd like to point out, my, I talk to my kids about cannabis. My son knows exactly what's going on, what exactly it is, the potential, um, side effects, negative side effects for underage consumption. But he also knows, uh, the medical benefits for older folks who are legally allowed to consume. People get off opiates with this stuff. The other day, I had a mechanic come into my store for the first time. And he is a Vietnam fighter pilot, uh, veteran. He is a master mechanic, a master electrician, all-round conservative, straight-aged guy. And he's got prostate cancer. And now, he's, who's never dealt with this sort of thing before. Now he's coming into our shop and I'm, I'm helping him out with some alternatives to the opiate medicine that they're giving him at the hospital that they're pushing on him. He doesn't wanna take it, it fogs his brain, it messes with his digestive system. It's not, it's good, it's not medicine. I'm not allowed to say that cannabis is, but it helps his symptoms. So, I talk to your kids, um, and it's our job, like I said, to put that public face on cannabis as far as, as far as it goes interacting with the public. Any manufacturer facility that goes into town here will have to, um, comply with the state statutes as far as packaging, labeling and everything goes like that.
Anybody else? Eric, thank you very much for your question.
Thank you.
All right, that's the last person signed up to speak to the council. Is there anybody here that get a chance to sign up and write the dresses? See ya none, we'll move on into the agenda. Thank you. That brings this to consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move consent.
Who does consent, the consent matter, put your red items?
Anyone got an extra pen, Judy stole mine.
Oh, sorry.
So, it's all right.
No materials. I'll get you one after this.
Here, you steal, steal it.
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting, December twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. Liquor license renewals for Annabelle's famous keg and chowder house, and that's a tourism license. The sourdough bar and Mike's elbow room. Exempting the procurement of the annual T-three technical support and special project services for the telecommunications division from competitive bidding and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. And that's with Daniel White Engineering Associates. Exempting the procurement of email services, network monitoring, customer support from competitive bidding and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. That's with NeoNova. Um, and we have two more. Uh, exempting the procurement of VeriMatrix encryption, annual maintenance and support services for the telecommunications division from the competitive bid and written quotation requirements of Ketchikan Municipal Code. That's with DASCOM Systems Group. And finally, exempting the procurement of the annual billing, software maintenance and support for the telecommunications division from the competitive bidding and written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's with Comsoft.
Anybody have any questions? See ya none, call the law.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing, that brings us to business general A-one, ordinance seventeen eighteen thirty-sixty-two, adding a new section thirteen oh nine oh four oh to the Ketchikan Municipal Code. Had a program for performing artists, second reading, this is the thing for the doc. Do we have a motion?
You're on it?
Yes.
I move the city council approving second reading ordinance number seventeen eighteen sixty-two, adding a new section thirteen point oh nine, point oh four zero to the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Program for Performing Artists Establishing Effective Date.
Second.
Moved in second. Anybody wanna talk to anything? Call the law.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Gage?
Yep.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Now passes seven to nothing, that brings us down to seventy-two, ordinance seventeen eighteen sixty-three, many in the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section five twenty oh one five, entitled Limit on Number of Retail Marijuana Stores to Also Limit Marijuana Cultivating Facilities and Prohibit Marijuana Product Manufacturing Facilities, second reading.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm with the city council approving second reading, ordinance number seventeen dash eighteen sixty-three, many in KMC, section five point two oh point zero one five, entitled Limit on Number of Retail Marijuana Stores to Also Limit Marijuana Cultivation Facilities and Prohibit Marijuana Production Manufacturing Facilities and Establishing Effective Date.
Second.
Moved in second, Bob?
Um, and I, and I appreciate, uh, the, the public comment, but, um, we're only limited within the city limits, there's still the availability for them to do it anywhere else in, in, outside of the city limits. Um, some of the problems I have is, you know, when they started testing these things, they had two labs test them and they had a seventy-seven percent error, a margin between them. So, that stuff hasn't been really panned out yet in regards to, um, the accuracy of the testing and how they do that kind of stuff. Um, so, I, I think that this isn't, and I, I'm gonna continue to support this and move it forward. I think that, uh, we've met, uh, the intent, we have two retail, we have two cultivations. Um, we provided, uh, the public with, uh, the marijuana as, uh, is legalized within the state of Alaska.
Judy?
I mean, I would vote for this, I guess, but I would like to see a sunset on it, I think. I don't think that's an unreasonable request. Um, you know, this thing has been so moving and, and to me, it's because we weren't really prepared as a state or as a city to even deal with this. There's been so many things that have changed. Um, this frozen buds thing, uh, that's what really caused concern for me. I mean, uh, five hundred thousand dollar fine is not something, you know, to blink at. I mean, tha- and that product was in our community. I have a big problem with that. I'm not faulting the folks at Stony Moose, but even if you look at that, I mean, those guys came to us in the beginning and said, you know, we're only gonna sell flower. And obviously, that wasn't a good business model. I mean, you had to have edibles, but you can't, you can't buy edibles here. So, already, they were bringing stuff in that federally wasn't acceptable. Um, given what happened today, I don't know, you know, what that whole thing is gonna look like. I, I would support a, um, a sunset clause, but, um...
Make your motion then.
I don't know that I'm gonna make a motion.
I, I will, 'cause I won't support it the way it is and, um, I'd like to see a sunset clause on it. So I'll make an amendment that there's a sunset clause of January to, to, um...
Eighteen nineteen.
Yeah.
Goodbye.
Two thousand nineteen.
Okay, we got a motion to sunset it on January ninth, um, two thousand nineteen, you have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Let's talk to the amendment, Bob?
So, what do you get a sunset, everything?
Sounds like it.
It'll sunset it. I can't support that. Um, and, and the other thing, take, if it's in an ordinance, you can always bring it back to the table and change the ordinance. You don't need a sunset clause. With, with what's going on in the federal government, um, I think planning slow and working through the process is a better plan than, than anything else. So, um, I will vote against the amendment.
Julie?
Okay, the, the intention of my amendment was to keep the limit, um, on, for the cultivation facilities at two. And, the sunset clause would allow us to open up the, um, the, to, to bring back the idea of manufacturing facilities here. So that's what I meant by the amendment.
So you're just talking about manufacturing, not retail?
Right.
Or the, okay, so the sunset is on, um, ma- um...
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing. Jenny Lee?
Um, I guess one of the questions I'd like to know is, if the federal government does go the way of it, what is the city's, what is our liability in this, being that we collect taxes?
Currently, great ideas.
And, just, I mean, you don't have to answer now, but if there would be a problem with that, but, um, you know, a lot of people assume that I'm dead against marijuana. Now, when it comes to children and, um, recreational, uh, yeah. When it comes to medical, I, I am fully understand the medical aspects of marijuana. But, edibles are geared towards young people. And a lot of times, what happens, people buy them, they take them home. And little kids, they see a brownie, they see a cookie, they see candy.
Judy?
There, oh, I'm sorry, I think-
Dave would be next, and then Mark.
The reason that, um, I didn't wanna bring up a sunset clause is exactly that. There's so many things that we don't know. I mean, I would support one, but what does that mean? I mean, what exactly are we stopping? So, I thi- you know, I think the idea is we bring it back if something changes, I guess, you know? But, um, i- in a way, I'm, I'm upset we even went this route anyway. Because if this federal, if what Sessions is proposing happens, then potentially, these folks are what, out of business after we told them to go ahead? I mean, I don't know. But, it just seems like we should've been, um, better prepared. And I think I would've liked to have, you know, a lot more information, but, like I said, I'm gonna vote for it.
Dave, Mark and then Dick.
As, as Bob mentioned, I mean, we can sunset anything next week if we want. I mean, none of this is unfortunately carved in stone. Um, so therefore, I'm not real excited about a sunset, any specific sunset. Um, I guess I'm surprised that people are surprised because Jeff Sessions has been saying this for over a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually more than that, actually, actually, I was tweeting, I was saying that he didn't like, and so, you're, anyone, no one can tell me they're shocked. You know? That said, that's, that, that, that's, that's separation from what we're talking about. I guess, um, we have allowed, um, growing, we have allowed two retail spaces. Um, this does not tie the borough's hands if they want to put in four hundred manufacturers. And maybe they do, who knows? I'll get in trouble getting down the chair. Sorry, John, is, you know, we both know what happens. But anyway, um, I, I guess I just have, part of me does not wanna make the creation of edibles easier. Because frankly, you know, I won't go as far as to say that they are, they are aimed at kids, 'cause I don't know that for sure. But I know that's where they're ending up. I know that right now, I know that for a fact, that's where they're ending up. And, it's a heck of a lot harder for a sixteen or seventeen-year-old kid to come up with, you know, a joint here and there than just to come up with a brownie that, that you are, or, if it, once the packaging's gone, we have no idea what it is. And I guess that's, that's where I draw the line. You know, I just can't, I, I just personally cannot make that an easier proposition.
Mark?
Well, council member Seaberton just mentioned that a sunset clause is unneeded and unnecessary. It can only just start over. And two minutes before that, we just voted on ordinance and passed it with a sunset clause. So, it's either a relevant part of the process or it's not, regardless of what the issue is. Um, it's probably more, a sunset clause is probably more relevant for this proposed ordinance given the differing positions of the federal government and the state government. Um, one other comment, I think regardless of, I, I don't follow the line of thinking of, well, we can do this, but, you know, the borough can do it if they want. And of course they can, but I think we should operate based upon what we end up thinking is the best way to go. This has nothing to do with the borough, whether they do it or not. And we should not approach this as just kicking the can into, over their, you know, their side of the court.
Okay, Dick.
Yeah, I am not gonna support this sunset clause, it's, it's not needed. And all it does is make this stuff a lot easier for the kids. You don't even know what's in this package. I think we do, but that's what it does, I can carry it around in my pocket, kid gets a hold of it. We can't, we can't prevent the borough from not doing it, but the less of that kind of candy that gets on the street, the better off we are. And, and I don't think we should be any part of doing it. If federal law or something changes, we always can let something added later. But it has no benefit to us at all. We're be, we're able to tax these retailers, we can't tax these guys making this stuff. And so to me, we just leave this ordinance alone the way it is and we don't pass this amendment.
Julie?
I, I wanted to ditto what Mark had said, the three points that he made. But also, I believe a sunset clause is needed because it will bring it back to us. I mean, how many times have we gone and we just don't remember to bring things back? Not that this issue's going away, but I just think it will be brought back to us, that's what a sunset issue does.
Sometimes we have to forget. Judy, then Jenny Lee.
I've completely lost my train of thought.
General Lee.
How edible.
General Lee, then let's vote on the amendment after her.
I don't support the sunset. I know it'll end up back on our table again, and bottom line is, I'm not going to support edibles, because if we look at the nu- oops. If we look at the number of kids that are getting a hold of this stuff, already in states that have had it legalized longer than us, the number of kids in the ER, um, for poisoning is pretty high, so...
All right, well, let's vote on the amendment and then go back to the main motion. That's their call or roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
Kus?
No.
Kifer?
No.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
No.
Flora?
Yes.
I s- oh.
That's it. Okay, that fails four to three. Um, we're at, back at the main motion. Anybody have anything else they want to say before we vote? See you then. Call the roll, ma'am.
Kifer?
Um, yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Isom?
No.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. That brings us down to new business, general government, A one seventy-one, preferred removal method, contract seventeen sixteen, planning and permitting for removal of berth-to-rock pinnacle Moffett and Nichols.
Yeah, honor.
Go ahead.
I recommend the city council adopt a motion directing Moffett and Nichols to proceed with the planning and permitting and removal of berth-to-rock pinnacle under contract number seventeen sixteen, based on the drill and blasting method, preferred alternative, to remove the geological structure as detailed in the firm's technical memorandum dated December twenty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Moved in second. Bob, did you want to add anything?
I think this is, uh, the quickest and best way to, to minimize that structure out there. As we've seen in the past, the state tried to grind Third Avenue, and, you know, that didn't work to the best of any. And I think, I think the longer we prolong this process, the more problems we're going to create. So I think that, uh, expedience, get it done in a short timetable, then move on. And I, I think that there's, as they go through this, they're going to look at the options, whether they can spread this out on the bottom, or if they have to pick it up, or whatever they're going to do, but I think that's the, the direction we should go.
Now, on the blasting, it's, um, I had Dave come by to see me today, concerned about boats in Thomas Basin. Yeah, is that going to be something we need to deal with, um, Steve?
Port and Harbor's Director, Steve Corcoran, I can't directly answer that. I don't know enough about it. But I know that, uh, wha- whatever comes of this, we'll make sure we'll make all accommodations. I don't expect it to be anything very spectacular at all, but...
So the core engineers, those guys will look into that or whatever.
Right. Uh, the, the one thing we wanted the council to, to roger up for if, if we head down this path is, um, the permitting is going to take a little longer, uh, if we have to do this. It, it's, it looks to be the most cost-effective method, um, but it, it's, the chances of it being, you know, permitted and ready to go for the, this coming winter of eighteen nineteen are very, very small now.
And how many blasts are we going to have to do out there?
I, I think they're talking about, uh, five, a series of five. Uh, what they do, they'll drill a series of holes, charge those holes, and then, then they'll, they'll blast that, that, uh, layer, for lack of a better term. And I think the, the guess is about five of those rounds, so...
Do we have, Bob?
Yeah, I think that, um, as this thing goes out the bit, the individual contractor to have an idea of how they, how they want to proceed with that, and they all have to carry blasting insurance and everything else in regards to how they perform. And they want to minimize the amount of, um, you know, shock wave or whatever else is going to be in the water, so, um, I, I think that this will be flushed out more and more as we proceed down the path.
Sean McFarlane from Moffett and Nichols was going to call in. He just tried. He says he's getting a call, cannot be completed, is dialed, so if, if, if you have questions, if you want him on the line, we would have to call him real quick.
That's all right. Dave?
Yeah, it's not herbal rock, so I don't think we're looking at a huge problem. Though anytime you blow up anything, you know, that close to an agribusiness fish stream, I'm sure there's going to be issues. I guess I would hope there would also be a public order if you get pushed about.
I agree.
In, in the lower forty-eight, um, that, there's a lot of the permitting requirements for stuff less than this, like, like just drilling, uh, pile sockets. Uh, a lot of the permits that they're issuing down there have requirements for sound, pressure monitoring, and things like that, which really drives, you know, the cost of monitoring up. So far, we've avoided that up here on stuff like that, but we haven't really, we haven't blown anything up underwater here yet, at least I ha- you know, since in my ten years, but, but we don't know what, to what level the, the permit requirements are going to be, but, uh...
Julie?
Yeah, I just was curious. I didn't read the entire four hundred and forty-five page report, but I was wondering, do they know exactly what kind of material they're dealing with?
If you read through the summary that Moffett and Nichols put together, it, it pretty much summarizes that four hundred and some pages of, of data, but it's, it's really hard rock.
And have they done it before, anything like this?
That'd be a question I'd want to ask him if you want, if you want to get him on the phone.
No, not tonight. That's okay.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Call the roll.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Kifer?
He wants to push the button.
Yes. What, that wasn't good enough?
And Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to seven V one, catch, um, exempting the procurement of four G LTE equipment and software services from petted bid written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. Ericsson Inc. exempting the procurement of four G equipment, software, and services from petted bid, written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code with Ericsson Inc. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, honor.
Go ahead.
Pursuant to subparagraph six of section three point one two point zero five zero A of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, I move the city council exempting the procurement of four G LTE equipment, software, and services from the competitive bid written quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. Authorize the general manager to enter into an agreement for the procurement of four G LTE equipment, software, and services from Ericsson Inc. at a cost of up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand in approved funds from the telecommunications division, two eighteen, four G LTE capital account.
Second. Moved in second. Anybody have any questions? I left it on there, so we had something to do. Call the roll, please.
Kus?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
And that passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to vouchers. Daily news, two thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars ninety-seven cents.
Your honor?
Yes.
I move for the approval of vouchers for the Ketchikan Daily News, the amount of two thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars ninety-seven cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's seconded? Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
And Seaberton?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes seven to nothing. Managers' report, Carl?
Just one, Mr. Mayor. Next week, we will have, uh, folks from DOT now, meeting with us, uh, and members of the public, relative to crosswalks on Tongas, and what we can do to improve the situation.
Dan, what's that?
That will be on the tenth, and, uh, there will be an internal meeting with staff at one o'clock. I think that's going to be at the Ted Fury Civic Center, and then the folks at Vice Mayor Seaberton met with, with our staff last week, will be invited to the public meeting at two o'clock with DOT folks.
Okay?
Hold me, is it two o'clock? Two o'clock.
On the tenth?
When are they going to meet with staff?
Two o'clock on the tenth.
Okay.
Or one o'clock with staff on the tenth.
Can I request, uh, go to that meeting?
I'm sorry.
I'll make a request for you later, if I can hand that.
I think that invitation's already been extended.
Thank you. All right, um, do you have, anybody have any questions on the managers' report? All right, that brings us down to C clerk's file.
Nothing, your honor.
City, uh, city attorney file?
Nothing, your honor.
Future agenda items, anybody? Mayor Council comments? Mark, you have anything?
No, sir.
Dave?
Yeah, um, I, I made some comment a while back about the, you know, blowing up the pickle out here, and so I was taking this too, too cavalierly. And perhaps, perhaps, but, um, for generations, my family's been running up on hazardous navigation all over this place, and it'd be nice to actually see one go away for a change.
Bob?
Yes, um, I would like to congratulate a young man that I've known for years. I coached him in Little League baseball and, and other things, but, uh, Donald Munhoven, um, just turned out as a lineman for KPU.
He gets another couple hundred hours before he got everything completed, has all his schooling down pat. He's one of the apprentices that we brought into the program, local kid.
And now he has a career that he will probably work at until he retires.
Great. Julie?
Uh, just one thing. I, I did something different on New Year's Eve this year, and I did a ride along with a police officer. And we rode from ten thirty to three thirty in the morning, and I saw a lot of things in Ketchikan. And I would just encourage any of you who want to do a ride along, you'll, you'll see a lot of things too, a lot of things that I can't really say. But it's, it's, it's enlightening to see what they have to go through, and just talking with them. I did a ride along about a month ago with a seasoned officer who's been in the, who's been an officer for a couple decades at least, and this one, this particular one, just got out of the, the academy. In fact, I think he's your youngest officer, and to hear the different perspectives and to see the different ways they do things is, it was very interesting and, um, sad in some cases on some of the calls. So I would just encourage you to take advantage of that.
Thank you. General Lee?
I don't have anything.
Judy?
Nothing, your honor.
Dick? Okay, that brings us down to executive sessions. We have two tonight. First one is a request for executive session negotiations of an amendment to the berth-to-lease agreement on two undertake facilities modifications to accommodate post-pandemic, um, vessels for two thousand nineteen through season, Ketchikan Dock Company. Do we have a motion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council to credit systems with the city manager report dated December twenty-sixth, two eighteen, it is in the best interest of the city council to discuss negotiations of the amendment to the lease and other definitive agreements between the city of Ketchikan Dock, Ketchikan Dock Company, LLC, related to the expansion of berth port to the, to accommodate larger vessels than executive session, according with KMC two point zero four point zero two five A one and A three, which include the need to discuss subjects of knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city and to receive legal advice within the attorney-client privilege.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Call the roll.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage? Kifer?
No.
Kus?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yeah, that passes six to one. We'll adhere and go into executive session. Terry, did you want to pass your thing or? Okay, we're back out of executive session. Uh, we've given management direction. We have no further, um, direct on business at time on that. That brings us down to fifteen eighty-two, request for executive session, annual evaluation, city manager, KPU general manager. Do we have a motion?
Your honor, I move that city council go into executive session, according with KMC two point zero four point six three five A two, for the first of the second annual evaluation of city manager, KPU general manager, which may involve discussions of subject intent, judges, reputation, characters of any person providing, person may request a public discussion.
Second.
Moved in second. Um, Carl, did you want it in executive session?
I would prefer that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, call the roll, please.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
No.
Kus?
Yes.
Kifer?
Sure.
Zingy?
Yes.
That passes seven to nothing. That's, um, Carl, we'll be right back. We'll be talking. Come back and get in.
Move on, going upstairs, I'm going.
You bet.
Is that really almost ten o'clock?
Okay, we're finished with, uh, evaluation, executive session. It's, uh, this is at this time. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, everybody. Um, one thing, the mayor didn't get to say anything at the, I forgot to see if the, the council had the comments. I will be, um, not available Wednesday through next Sunday of next week, so otherwise everything is...
Cool.